All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. Can we have a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
All right, so it looks like we have a quorum. Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from the September 5th, 2024 regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any motions or comments on the meetings, on the minutes from our last meeting?
Move we approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Rose. They're second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sims. Any discussion on these minutes? Any changes? All right. If not, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Communications. Do we have any communications?
We have communications that pertain to the case tonight. Do I, do you want me to just summarize those now?
Sure, that'd be good.
Okay, yeah, so we received six email communications. There were four that were in favor of the proposed text amendment and two that were opposed.
All right, continued public hearings. We have no continued public hearings. Old business, we have no old business. Which brings us to our new public hearings for this, our new public hearing for this evening, which is Plan Case Number 2493-T24, a request by David Huber to amend Article 6 of the Urbana Zoning Ordinance to eliminate lot width and area requirements for two-family dwellings in the R2 Single Family Residential and R3 Single and Two-Family Residential zoning districts. We have a presentation from-
Okay, yes.
All right.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the rare occasion when a text amendment is not proposed by staff, but I will give a summary of our staff report on this. Okay, so this is a, excuse me, this is a proposal by David Huber for a text amendment to eliminate the additional requirements for lot area and width for two-family dwellings or duplexes in the R2 Single Family and R3 Single and Two-Family Residential zoning districts. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires duplexes to be on larger, wider lots than single homes, and this proposal would eliminate those additional requirements and would allow duplexes on any lot as long as the other development regulations are met. And those are things like the standard minimum lot size for, for the zoning district, floor area ratio, open space ratio, parking, and minimum yards. So the intent of the change is, is to allow duplexes in those two districts, and those districts state that duplexes should be allowed, but where the additional size requirements make it difficult currently to build duplexes without additional zoning approvals, so typically that's a variance. So, paragraph 6.3B of the zoning ordinance states that in R2 and R3 districts, any lot platted and recorded after December 21st, 1970, on which there is proposed to be a duplex, it shall contain an area of not less than 9,000 square feet and have, have an average width of not less than 80 feet. And any lot platted and recorded before December 21st, 1970, on which there is proposed to be a duplex, shall contain an area of not less than 6,000 square feet and have an average width of not less than 60 feet. So many lots that are platted before 1970 are less than the minimum 6,000 square feet and/or 60 feet wide, and also, an even greater percentage of lots that are platted after 1970 are less than the 9,000 square feet and/or 80 feet wide. So the current regulations pretty severely limit where duplexes can be built. And if you look in Table 1 in your memo, there's a summary, but really, the upshot is that in the R2 district, just over half of all lots do not meet the minimum area slash width requirements. In the R3 district, it's about, it's 38%, so almost four out of every 10 that don't meet those minimum requirements. And if you look at lots that were platted before 1970, about 40% of those do not meet those minimums, and after 1970, it was 57%. So again, the current regulations are, are limiting where duplexes can go. Furthermore, the distribution of lots is not really uniform across the city, so I'll just go through some examples here, showing some different neighborhoods. These are all in your memo. Sorry, I didn't label each of these maps individually, but let's see. So, let me pull up sort of, well, this is, this is a good one. So this is mostly historic East Urbana, so this is, you know, you've got downtown over here, you've got West Urbana over here, which also has a lot of sort of these black hatched or non, are lots that don't meet the minimum size. So you can see a pretty significant portion of this historic East Urbana neighborhood does not meet the, the minimums as they currently are required. But then other areas of town, so if you get to, say, Berenger Commons, that area, you know, there's much fewer percentage or a much smaller percentage of, of lots that don't meet the minimums. So sort of the, the south part of Urbana, there are very few that, that don't meet. So again, it's, it's not evenly distributed, so that's just something to point out. So duplexes require a conditional use permit in the R2 district, so everything that's yellow on these maps. If the proposed text amendment is approved, they would still be required to get a conditional use permit, so it would not be an, a by right use in the R2, would still need that, so it'd have to go through our zoning board. Duplexes are allowed by rights in the R3 district, however, as I, as I mentioned a minute ago, about four out of every 10 lots in the R3 district, in fact, it is not allowed by right because they don't meet those, those minimums. So at present, the only way to build a duplex in R2 or R3 on any of the lots in these maps that are hatched with the black, hatching is to get a variance, and that's a process that is not a guarantee. And really, we don't see any practical reason to impose these larger lot requirements for duplexes if you can meet all the other development regulations. So if you can meet your floor area ratio, you've got a regular size lot for the district or a minimum lot size for the district, you've got your open space, you've got enough parking for two units. It, it doesn't seem too logical to impose this additional area requirement. And I did note in the, the staff memo that we've, we've only had a few variances over the past 20 years for people wanting to put duplexes in, on a, a lot that's smaller than currently required. I wouldn't take that to, to be a lack of demand for duplexes necessarily, it's just a lack of people wanting to apply for a variance. So I've, you know, I've talked to plenty of people over the years that you say you would need to get a variance, and then they just don't pursue it, so wanted to point that out. Okay, so in your staff memo on page three, I, I repeated the, the applicant's responses verbatim from the, the application. I'm not going to go through all of those, but I did want to highlight a few things. So, one thing that the applicant pointed out is that the, so the, he included the intent statements for the two districts, so I'll just read those. So the R2 Single Family Residential District is intended to provide areas for single-family detached dwellings at a low density. And says the R2 district is also intended to provide for a limited proportion of two-family dwellings or duplexes. The R3 district is intended to provide areas for low-density residential development, including single-family attached and detached dwellings and two-family dwellings. So that, that's pretty clear. The applicant states that the, the current requirements severely diminish the specificity of the R3 district relative to the R2 district. And he says the effect of eliminating the lot area and width requirements for the two-family dwellings in both districts would be to allow, or to have in the R2 district, two-family dwellings, they would require a conditional use permit, which is very clear, and then in R3, two-family dwellings would be allowed by right on any lot. In response to the second question on the application, which is what changed or changing conditions warrant the approval of this amendment, the applicant says that Urbana needs more housing and more types of housing. And he goes into, into more detail as well. For number three, what other circumstances justify the, the zoning amendment? He states that the area and width requirement is arbitrary because it is possible to construct a two-family dwelling on what is considered a substandard lot according to the zoning ordinance, but still meet all the other development requirements of the district. And he says if a lot area and/or width makes constructing a two-family dwelling impractical, a two-family dwelling will not be constructed. The zoning ordinance does not need to regulate it. And he says furthermore, and I won't go into details on all of these, but he has some points about land use efficiency, housing diversity, more housing where housing is needed, and remaining competitive as a city because other cities in the area, in particular Champagne, don't impose these additional requirements on those. Back to the land use efficiency, he, he says that essentially if you have a lot that's one foot less square feet, so if you have a 5,999 square foot lot in the R3 district, you'd be allowed 2,400 square feet of floor area, but nobody is really building, it's not economically feasible to build single-family dwellings that are that size in the R3 district, nor is it desirable, he states. So he says by imposing a lot area and width requirement for two-family dwellings, the zoning ordinance is contributing to underutili, underutilization of the land and thereby tax revenue. So the proposed changes are pretty simple. It would be to remove these two paragraphs, which kind of, the, the second one tags along with the first one. But essentially, the, the first one is the one that I read most of in my introduction, and then the second paragraph is one that says except as noted above, a lot in the R2 or R3 district who doesn't meet the require, those requirements stated above, shall only be used for a single-family dwelling purposes or for non, any of the non-dwelling uses permitted in that district. So, and in fact, that's saying you cannot do a duplex on, on something that doesn't meet those requirements. Another, another change that is not noted up here, but another change we would make if the, the proposed changes go through would be to remove a footnote in Table 6.3 that essentially just repeats paragraph B up on the screen. Okay, so with respect to the comprehensive plan, this proposed text amendment would fit in with the comprehensive plan. Page one of the plan, under the vision, it states in part that appropriately designed infill development will be encouraged to help revitalize the built urban environment. So this proposed text amendment would encourage appropriately designed infill development by making more lots available for duplexes, which are appropriate in the R2 and R3 districts per their intent statements or their definitions. The text amendment would also help meet several other goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, including goals 1, 2, 4, 18, and 19, to preserve and enhance the character of Urbana's established residential neighborhoods. One that states new development in an established neighborhood will be compatible with the overall urban design and fabric of that neighborhood. One is to promote a balanced and compatible mix of land uses that will help create long-term viable neighborhoods. One is to promote infill development, and the final is to provide a strong housing supply that meets, or to meet the needs of a diverse and growing community. So in this case, the Plan Commission has three options. You can forward the case to City Council with a recommendation to approve the text amendment as presented. You can forward it to Council with a recommendation to approve it with any specific suggested changes or modifications, or you can forward it to Council with a recommend, recommendation to deny the text amendment. Staff recommends that Plan Commission recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to City Council. I can take any questions. I know Mr. Huber is here as well, if you have questions for him.
All right, thank you, Ms. Garcia. Are there any questions for staff? Ms. Tropkins?
I confess I'm having trouble getting all this put together in terms of what actually happens. So 6.3A, if I read literally, says that, or in the case of a lot in any other district, which would include R2 and R3, which was of public record honor before November 6, 1950, which would include many of the lots that we're talking about in Western East Urbana, if such lot has less area or width than herein required, interesting to think about what here, what is in here, that lot may be used for any of the uses permitted in that district, provided that all other requirements of this ordinance, including yard height, floor area ratio, or open space ratio, and off-street parking for the respective districts and uses are complied with. The uses buildings are structured on such a lot shall not be considered nonconforming due solely to the nonconforming of the lot. Now, I think what this means, though, not what it says, is that if we have a building and a use in place on a lot that does not meet the requirements for R2 or R3, and that lot was platted before 1950, that it is not considered a nonconforming use. I do not think it is intended to mean what it appears to say until the last sentence suggests otherwise, that I could change the use, which is what it implies if I read it literally in the first part. So, I don't know how we're interpreting that, but if you interpret it one way, we don't need to pass any of this because it already says we can do that for lots, well, not any of this, because that's for lots before 1950. But I don't think it means what it says.
I, I think it means what it says, but what it says is not exceedingly clear, but what that whole bit about otherwise herein means, if there's an exception somewhere else, that that trumps the rule. So the exceptions in, for duplexes in R2 and R3 are spelled out here in paragraphs B, or in paragraph B, right after, you know, right after that paragraph A.
But does it apply? So, maybe back up a minute. Part of what I'm trying to figure out is where we end up once we make the changes. And if this applies to, if once we remove these other two, this applies to changes of use or building, it implies that we can change them in lots pre-1950 without meeting the width or size requirements of the zoning ordinance, okay? Which actually is a minimum of 6,060 feet. So no lot that's less than 6,000 or 60 feet, even if we made these changes, could actually be changed to a duplex, because that would be a use change which would have to meet the zoning requirements. Am I correct?
No.
Okay, I don't know why.
Because it's, it's saying that, so if the use is allowed in the district, this, this is just-
Are you talking about A now or B?
I'm talking about A. Because under A, and maybe, maybe I should pull up the zoning ordinance. But essentially, that, that whole paragraph is in there so that we can, okay. We don't have my web browser of choice on here, but that's okay. So what it's saying is, you know, it's acknowledging that in, say, historic West Urbana or East Urbana, there are a lot of lots that do not conform to our current area and width standards. And what that's saying is you can still use those for any use that's allowed in that district, even if it's a substandard lot size. So, you know, if your house burns down, you can still put up a new house.
If the lot was platted before 1950?
Yeah, which is most of the ones in, in, most, most of the areas that have substandard lots, maybe all of the areas with substandard lots are-
Not all of them, because you just showed us a map where that's probably not true unless it's only the ones after 1970, but it doesn't look to me like it is.
No, the, the maps that I showed included every R2 and R3 lot, but, yeah, so no matter when they were platted, but the substandardness of them for our current duplex rules reflects when they were platted as well.
In the maps? So if they were-
Yes, it's embedded, it's embedded in there, yeah.
They were not possible to develop duplexes because they were under 6,000?
Yes. Yeah, and for the ones platted after 70, if they were less than 9,000 square feet or less than 80 feet wide, they'll show up on that map with, with that coloring.
By deleting B and C, we are deleting the requirement for a 6,000-foot lot and a 60-foot lot, which is the district requirement regardless of use for districts R2 and R3.
Right, we're not-
So I can build a single-family house by not meeting the zoning requirements?
Well, the- I don't, I'm, I'm not sure I follow.
The table still has the requirements of the-
Well, okay, it still does. So if the table still says 6,000 feet, and I change the use on a lot that's not 6,000 feet, either the table doesn't apply, or I can't build on that, a duplex on that parcel because it's a change of use.
Well, you, you can if it's platted, if it meets this clause or this paragraph in A, because that use is allowed in the district, so you can, you can change it to that use.
Okay, so A is actually crucial to the outcome that you want.
A is, I would say A is crucial to the outcome of putting anything on any lot-
It is not just about nonconforming uses.
Right. Yeah, this is, this is just allowing you to take any, any old lot, not any old lot, any really old lot, and, and developing something on it. But then B and C are, are sort of, but we want to make these exceptions, so you don't put duplexes on, you know, on a lot that doesn't meet these minimums.
Okay, and in your maps, so that would only apply to lots platted before 1950. Any lot platted after 1950 still has to meet the 6,000 requirement?
Right, right.
I'm assuming that year was set because post-1950, the lots were standardized with widths 60 feet or-
Right, I did not check into that, but I'm 99% sure you're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I couldn't figure out how that applied because it seemed to be about nonconforming uses, but it's not, well, it is about nonconforming uses, but it's going to apply to changes in use, not just to the normal notion of nonconforming uses. So I can change it to any use, okay. And the map that you showed-
Mm-hmm.
Did make the distinction, so you've got them by-
Yeah.
If they were platted after 1950 and they're under 6,000, they're not, well, so I'm, I'm trying to imagine a before and after map, okay? If we look at before-
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, yeah. If, if we look at the, if we measure a map before, which is the map you're showing, I think, the, those platted before 1950 that are under 6,000 would be shown as not developable. And not duplexable, let's put it that way.
Well, it's the ones before, before 1970, December 21st, 1970 are shown as not developable as a duplex.
But if we're relying on item A, and it's going to be only the ones that were platted before 1950, that are going to be able to go duplex if they're under 6,000. The ones between 1950 and 1970 that are under 6,000 are not going to be able to go duplex. Am I correct?
I'm pretty sure you are correct, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what I was asking, that it-
Yeah, right.
It seems like we don't know for sure that 1950 was chosen because after that point, most of the lots are these standard width-
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that was when our zoning ordinance first created the standards for, for the districts. Now, I don't know if those have changed over time. I don't know if it was, you know, in 1950, if it said 6,000 square feet, or if it was some other number.
But this 1950 has been in the zoning ordinance for a while?
Yes.
So.
Though it also, well, yeah, okay.
I'm assuming that it was not chosen arbitrarily-
Right.
-at that point when it was added.
So, once we, if we made this change, the result would be before 1950, they could be under 6,000 and 60, I mean, between 1950 and 1970, they would have to be 6,060 feet. And after 1970, they would also have to be between 60 and 6,000 feet. And 6,000 feet. So we, if we want to know the outcome, we need to know-
Yeah.
-the breaks of when those were platted. But at, at least, I think I now understand how A, B, and C link together. And, and your assumption is that herein applies only to B and C as the ones countering it, not to anything else that follows anywhere else in the zoning ordinance, because Section 6.3 is also about a whole bunch of other things, like common lot line and so on.
Speaking of which-
Yeah.
Were you going to say something else?
I, I think for now I'm-
So, why, you know, the, to me, it's, it's glaringly obvious that, or it's, I'm curious why, if we're making this change to allow duplexes, why not allow two-unit common lot lines- why not allow two-unit common lot line units the same relief from the restrictions? What would be the difference in terms of that use or that development type as something that needs to have tighter restrictions, I guess? Because I can imagine a duplex being side by side, which would look very similar to a common lot line, two-unit development.
Yeah, so I think if you're following along at home, Mr. Allred is talking about this section that follows pretty shortly thereafter. So Section 6.3E, which essentially imposes the same restrictions. It just takes the numbers and cuts them in half because that's the math when you're doing it. Yeah, so it basically imposes the same restriction on common lot line dwelling units as well. So is it a suggestion that perhaps we should get rid of some of this as well? If we were to go...
Well, I'm asking if the recommendation is that having these restrictions as a way, I assume at one point, you know, to mitigate the impact of a duplex, although the development standards and the buildable envelope of the duplex is exactly the same as a single-family home, I'm assuming that this would, the same sort of argument would apply to a two-unit common lot line structure. And it sounds like there might be something related to the building code that makes a distinction between these two. But would that matter in terms of how we regulate it as something that is, you know, meant to preserve the compatibility with the existing single-family homes?
It's not discussion time, but I'll weigh in a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Having done both of these, a duplex is a very different thing because we can, they can be stacked. Units can stack. And a common lot line development in what is the minimum standard lot is frankly really, really hard, mostly because of open space and trying to get parking on it and stuff like that. But in developing them, you approach them very differently. I'll say anecdotally, we did, my firm did a duplex on a lot infinitely smaller than anything we're talking about. And the way we had to do that was stack the units on top of each other. So they're just different things and under the way they're dealt with in the building code and the zoning ordinance, the way they're laid out.
Okay, but if we, I mean, we could remove those requirements and if it wasn't economical to construct it on, you know, the standard-sized lot, then that would be left up to the developer or the landowner?
Right, yeah.
Any other questions?
May I? Are we looking for an end product here that is independent of the time the land was platted? Are we looking for a resolution that allows us to be independent of that?
Well, I would direct the questions to staff at this point. And if it's something we want to discuss as a group, then we can discuss that.
I mean, I would love it if we could get rid of anything that has to do with any time that something was platted or not. So if we could do that, that would be great, I guess is my answer.
Any other questions? Ask another question. So you wrote your memo based on looking at whether or not this kind of change was supported by the current comprehensive plan, right? Which we all know dates from 2005.
Right.
Would your recommendation change based on what is in the current draft of the new comprehensive plan?
I mean, if anything, it would be a stronger recommendation for making these changes. Because I think we're, you know, talking about things like incremental development, which we have yet to define fully for you all, but we're working on that. And talking about infill development and, you know, sort of allowing neighborhoods to change, but not in dramatic ways. I think, you know, allowing a duplex instead of a single plex, which I just coined a phrase. But I think that would go along with what we're talking about for the new comprehensive plan, yeah.
All right, any other questions for staff?
Yes. Section 6.3 deals with lot area and width. And we're talking about ensuring that all of the other requirements are met, but not these specific requirements for lot area and width. Is there material in Section 6.3 that we would wish to retain?
Yeah, I mean, just anything. So we're just talking about cutting out B and C. I do think, so it's definitely important to retain paragraph A because it does say that if you have a lot that doesn't meet the current requirements, you can still develop it if it's old. Paragraph D is about the MOR district. I think that's been very effective in keeping development in that district from being too massive, which is what it is intended to do. And then, but the bit about common lot line dwelling units, I think Chair Allred brings up some good points about how we might want to get rid of some or all of that as well. So, yeah, I'd say retaining paragraphs A and D are important and the rest of it are not, is not very important.
But if we retain A, which begins its first four or five lines with, by distinguishing the year of plating, could A be reworded such that it's independent of that? If that's what we're after?
Yeah, I see what you're, I think I see what you're getting at. I suppose you could reword it. I feel like, no matter how you reword it, you might have to put a date in there. But it might be today's date, just any. I mean, because basically, any lot that is platted from this day forward is going to have to meet the minimum standards, so... You might be able to clean that up just to say that any existing lot that doesn't meet the standards can still be used if it's been legally platted whenever it was. Lou, you look skeptical. Yeah, is your mic on?
Part of my skepticism is I think there's a whole lot of complexity here and we need to maybe slow down, but that's for deliberation.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if not...
Okay, thanks.
I'll briefly go over the rules for a public hearing. So first, the petitioner, I'm assuming you're Mr. Huber, right? Okay. The petitioner can address the commission if they wish. And if we have some questions, we can ask them. And then, if anyone happens to show up in the meantime in favor, they'll be allowed to address the commission, followed by anyone that's opposed. Then at the end, if needed, the petitioner can address the commission again. Then we'll close the public input portion, discuss, and possibly vote. So, Mr. Huber, if you'd like to address the commission?
This is kind of fun to come every Thursday and just start striking things from the zoning ordinance that are weird, if you guys are willing. Anyways, I had my comments, but I should probably respond to two things just from this conversation. You're right to raise other things. Since I was the author of it, I had to also make a kind of political decision about how much I could ask for, right? So of course, there was other things. But I don't want to undermine the core thing by going for too many things. So I leave that to you. This second note about the conversation is, Kevin, you and I have talked over, Marcus raised this point recently. Common lot, absolutely, common lot lines, yeah, do that, get rid of that. I could make it work on a 52-foot lot. And that would also give me, if I'm digging up the sewer, put in a second sewer for the potential to maybe sell it separately down the road. Even if I were to hold it, both by myself, that would certainly be a huge benefit to the city, I would think, to have that option for individual ownership. But the point is, in the land development code, there is a ratio that kind of contradicts the zoning, not contradicts, it makes following the zoning ordinance difficult. It supersedes it, something like that. Which is, there's a 1 to 4 ratio of width to depth, so...
I believe it's 1 to 3.
1 to 3, okay. So this came up on a lot that I am considering building a duplex on. I think it would work if it were a zero lot line. It would come out to 1 to 4, let's say. And therefore, it's not eligible to be a common lot line, to be subdivided, because that is the process that governs, is my understanding, the zero lot line implementation. So, yeah, I would love it, but we also have to fix some other... My understanding is we'd also have to fix some other things in the case of a lot of these lots that are, say, 56 feet by 125 feet. And that splitting it in half would make that proportion wrong. So, yeah, the case for me is laid out in the application. I guess three more things I said too, but these were the three things I was going to say before. The self-initiated part, you know, it's kind of like, hmm, what's this guy doing? Well, I live in Urbana, I work with the zoning ordinance a lot. And I guess I'd like to think this is kind of like a real, like, model of what a city should be like. Someone who works with the document and that has the right to propose an amendment to it can do that, as opposed to some sort of smoky room where developers meet with the mayor and the city council, and then they go do the zoning amendment, et cetera. So, second is the particular economics of this kind of development, or really redevelopment, because we're dealing with infill. It's just simply too expensive to redevelop a lot as a single-family house. When there is a house on it, that is the case that I often find myself in, it's a house that's been vacant for 10 years. A house vacant for eight years. I'm talking about two properties that I've bought in the last year. They're obsolete, they cannot meet the requirements of the... Without substantial investment, meet the requirements of the building code or the rental code and so on, so they sit. Let's say you can get one of these for $20,000. I've never got one for $20,000, but let's just say you can, more like $30,000, $40,000. Well, then you've got to knock it down. $10,000, $15,000, $20,000, if it has a basement versus a crawl space. Add those two things up, and let's just be very conservative, you know, 40 to 50 to 60 to get to a lot. And then what happens is we go to stick a scope through the sewer and find out, yeah, it's cracked in the street. You know, we're basically going to have to take it all the way back to the main, which means going into the street. So that's an additional cost, and that's an additional cost that you don't have at Stone Creek or Berenger Commons, where if you look at the listings, those lots in Stone Creek get competitively with that or less. And as of now, in many cases, in these hashed lots, you can only build a single family. So in the case where redevelopment is necessary to get to that point, and I want it in my neighborhood because the alternative is a house that is vacant that is depressing everything around it. So how we get there is very important. There's distortions in the market. There's the Think Urbana program, which exists at Berenger Commons and Stone Creek, which gives tax subsidies and sales tax abatements on building materials. So on top of, you know, getting this new lot in, let's say, Easturbana that might or might not have a functioning sewer, and you just pay the same price as at Stone Creek, but Stone Creek also gets zero sales tax on their building materials and gets a five-year graduated tax abatement, what is the lever we can pull? We don't have one, the city doesn't have one, I believe, until 2030 to change that. And that's another issue. But we do have the potential to just clear up some of the zoning ordinance to allow what's really allowed in the zoning district and which also potentially allows the redevelopment to take place and actually immediately results in a tax benefit to every tax district because there's no abatement on it. And then if you think, oh, you know, is my neighbor's house going to get torn down now because duplexes are allowed? Pretty much guarantee you that if, like, there's a neighbor in your house that you can talk to, that house probably is worth too much to justify tearing down and rebuilding a duplex. I could make it work. So I don't think this is going to unleash some great bonanza of tearing down occupied properties. But I should also add, this isn't merely about redevelopment. This could be someone who wants to add a second unit to their house. This could be a studio on the back of their house. Whatever it is, certainly there's probably among some of the people who are skeptical of such a thing, but also like to build something else. Anyways, the last thing is, if it's... I've just spent the last week thinking like, why does this exist in the first place? If this cannot be approved to remove it, then what is the, how can it be substantiated? The existing language. As an architect or designer, I can tell you that I can build a duplex on a lot less than 6,000 square feet and less than 60 feet. So it's not that. As a developer, I can say that I can make the economics work in their desirable units at the end that people want to rent, so it's not the issue. I'm not a planner. I was thinking, well, is there some logic about massing? And they don't want skinny buildings and would, you know? But there's still the 35-foot height requirement. And so a single-family house could have those same proportions as said duplex on a skinny lot. And same with a corner lot in our city. You could have a conforming lot of 60 feet wide. But we use two front yard setbacks, not a primary and secondary, and they both require the full setback. So on a 60-foot lot with a 5-foot side yard setback and a 15 to 25 secondary front yard, a 15 to 25 secondary front yard, you might only be able to build a 30-foot building on that conforming 60-foot lot, which produces it. Anyways, I can't think of it. I guess I was just, I assume at some point, there was an attempt to kind of ration duplexes, and I wasn't around. Doesn't seem like anyone here was around, kind of, to understand how this came to be. So that's, that's where I'll leave you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Huber.
Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Huber? Yeah, all right. Seeing as we have no one else in the audience, we'll declare the public input portion closed, and now go into a discussion amongst the commission, and possibly entertain motions to vote. So is there any discussion on the proposal? Ms. Sims?
It just seems like, from listening and reading, that there are a lot of moving parts, and I just want to be sure we sort of make sure that the parts all flow, like that you're not making one change that has an implication somewhere else. I almost feel like we want to crosswalk it, just to, again, it just seems like there are, like, when you make one change, that it could have some reverberations in another part, or there could be redundancies that, without, like, careful picking apart, might make it more challenging. So that would be my only concern, is when I went back and read and I listened to the comments, there just seems to be potential landmines or potholes.
Any other comments or discussions on the proposal? Are we ready to make a motion?
Not to make a motion, but it strikes me that if there is a sense that, that a modification of area and width is appropriate, then, if there is that sense, then, then we're left with having to decide between approval or approval with modifications.
Ms. Hopkins?
So I'm closer to where Ms. Sims is. And it's partly, not, I mean, the general objective makes sense, but there's a lot of history and a lot of complexity to where all this comes from. And I, I want to think some more of it through, which I think may or may not apply to different parts of the city. So I'm not sure where to start, but let's, let's start up by Bradley and Lincoln, where we've been recently. If I look at a neighborhood there, which I'm guessing has less than 6,000 square foot lots, and I'm guessing might be before 1950, but maybe not. Somebody here can probably tell me. And I understand that one of the things that's happening in this neighborhood, which has been a homeownership neighborhood historically, and from our recent conversation, is maybe continuing to play its role with African-American and Hispanic families. It also is being, it's transitioning from that homeowner to a institutionally-owned rental, is my understanding. And encouraging or allowing duplexes in that neighborhood might not be the greatest idea in terms of what you might call neighborhood stability or neighborhood strategy. I don't know, but it makes me think, do I want to increase the likelihood that those properties all turn into rentals? And not only into rentals, but into duplex rentals. Another thing, because Section 63 also deals with common lot line, and I already had this in mind, but it has already been brought up, the, a major difference between a duplex and a common lot line dwelling is ownership. A duplex, by definition, has a renter, because it's two dwelling units and one owner. And I've owned duplexes. I've even lived in a three-plex and rented it. So this is not unreal. Common lot lines are more likely to be owner-occupied. Owner-occupies the eventual rental is an issue for the nature of a neighborhood. So part of this comes down to how much is going to happen, and we can pretend that we know the rate at which is going to happen, but I think we maybe want to think about this. And I'm also thinking about the conditional use, which applies to R2, but not to R3, whether it's legit in a conditional use to say, whoops, we've got three duplexes on this block, so we're not going to let you do one, because that would change the neighborhood. And I'm guessing we can't do that as a conditional use, or we'd get into trouble if we did.
Is that a question?
Well, if you think otherwise, I'd be happy to hear.
Well, I mean, one of the conditional use criteria is how it's going to affect the character of the neighborhood, which we all love to discuss. So that would be, you know, and if R-
I'll smoke. Is that a minute? I'll smoke. Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, the R2 district says, you know, it's not defined well, but it says the thing about sort of a small number of duplexes as well. So-
R3 doesn't have that, though.
Right. R3 says you should be, you can do them anywhere.
But, so another reason to think about the common lot line is, we might want to do the common lot line as part of the same move, so that we take into account the ownership-rental question. And I don't know that we can do that in real time, but I think that there would be a reason to do that. And I think it would also give a more convincing logic to what we're up to. So another aspect of this that is of interest to some people is that it is not terribly difficult to create a duplex out of an existing building that's in good shape. Again, I've owned them and lived in them. If you create a duplex out of an existing building in Urbana, you go from four unrelated people to eight unrelated people. This, again, changes the character of a neighborhood, potentially. It's a question of how much. And we haven't, when I talk about zoning, one of the attributes is, how are we accounting for change in a zoning district? What are we, which has to do with non-conforming use rules. But we also have to be forward-thinking of how we're imagining change occurring and knowing that we're not ending up somewhere we don't want to end up. Or maybe we do want to end up, but admitting that that's what we want to do. So I guess, I'd like to maybe imagine rewriting 63 to be a clean, or as clean as we could get it, probably take the MOR out of the same section, because I think it's about other things, but I'm not sure. But ABC and E1, 2 are basically parallel, ones for a common lot line and ones for duplex. And the other thing is, interestingly, both common lot line and duplex cannot be separate buildings. Whereas the other way, that if we want to talk about change in neighborhoods where the current housing cannot be replicated, ADUs, other things, might also be part of the same scheme and be also part of a, thinking about where do we want these kinds of things to happen? And if we get them, if we get the whole package, package together, then we're more likely, it seems to me, to get the right mix of the right things in the right places. Anyway, that's where I'm at, I guess.
Any other discussion? Ms. Sims?
So this is really just a question, but I am aware, because I've lived in a version of it and owned a version of this in another city, where it has sort of a double, where two different, they're, like, connected, so it looks like a duplex, but each individual body owns its own separate entity. So would that be prohibited? Because it doesn't always have to be renters, right? We each live, owned our own thing. It was a condo, right?
Yeah, it was a condo.
Yeah, but does that, does this language prohibit, would prohibit that?
No.
Okay.
Like, are, well, are the, are the chain, does which language prohibit that?
Does that change the proposed duplex, like, I guess I would, because it seems like the lot line issue has something around ownership. I'm confused, but I would wonder if it has to necessarily define ownership, because I know, again, when I was a young professional owning something that was affordable, but I wanted to be in community, absolutely made sense for the city that I was in. So I guess I want to just be assured, like, it doesn't always mean that you're creating more rental property that you could. Actually, now people want to live in more small, communal, connected neighborhoods. Could that be an option?
Well, condos, to me condos are always just sort of a weird, separate issue. So, I mean, we're concerned, the zoning ordinance is mostly concerned with use. So we have a duplex, which is two units in the same building on one lot. And then we have this language for common lot line dwelling, which is two units in one building, but you split, split it into two different lots. So you could, I think you could probably condoize a common lot line dwelling. I know people do that in town. I don't know if you could condoize just a straight-up duplex, but I feel like that's a separate issue, and nothing we're talking about here is, is going to affect that one way or the other.
Well, I think the question is whether or not we need to think about the balance of rental units versus units for ownership. Why, I mean, you can have an apartment building that is condoized, so why, why couldn't you have a duplex that's condoized?
I think you probably could, but that's, I'm no expert on condoization.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. It just strikes me as a possibility. I mean-
I take to heart what Mr. Hopkins brought up. In the changing, changing zoning ordinances carries with it the possibility of changing neighborhood characteristics, like homeownership. I wonder if by taking as our guide the comprehensive plan, do we have enough faith in that comprehensive plan, that if it speaks to increasing the accessibility, I'm not sure just what the language is, but it seems to me to be something along those lines, that these issues would be taken into account, and continuing to use the comprehensive plan as a, as a guide with regard to those issues is sufficient.
You're, you're asking if using the 2005 plan is-
Well, yes, but I feel in this, I don't have the language in front of me, but it seems we are, we must take into account the points that, that Mr. Hopkins raises. And I'm torn between, I'm tempted to rely on the comprehensive plan to say that it, for our, for my purpose, it may have to be a sufficient guide with regard to that.
But you're, you're thinking that it says something different than what the staff memo includes?
Well, I hadn't anticipated at all that, that, the point that he brings up, that, that we would very likely decrease homeownership and increase rental.
Well, I don't know if we could assume that. I mean, I think-
Maybe not.
Mr. Huber's comment about the unlikeliness of this happening in housing that is occupied, that, I mean, he's talking about the difference between buying a house for $20,000 versus buying a house for $200,000. I mean, it's, the economics are not going to work for something that is much more valuable, because it's in good condition and occupied.
I think Lou brought up the situation where you have a decent enough house, you just duplex it. That's a very likely scenario, and that would take a single-family home that could be used by a family. Now, the developer, investor will have the incentive to turn that into a duplex. That's not really what we want to see here.
Well, I think one of the goals, I mean, the comprehensive plan in 2005 and in the draft talks about wanting to have a variety of housing types in every neighborhood. So I wouldn't say that that's not something that we're interested in achieving.
Not through this way. I can be on board with, if you have a rundown house, it doesn't make sense for it to be sitting there without a way to develop it. But if you have a decent enough house, I don't want to create a situation where people would be incentivized to change the use of it in not the best way possible. Just turn, chop a single-family house into duplex. That's something I don't want to see.
Right. But if we look at this map, for example, I mean, in this neighborhood, there, the lots without the diagonal crosshatch are lots where this can be done currently, correct?
In this neighborhood with a conditional use permit, because these are all Zoned R2. In this neighborhood with a conditional use permit, because these are all zoned R2. But yes, the, just the straight yellow ones are ones where you could apply for a conditional use permit tomorrow for a duplex.
So it seems pretty arbitrary to me that...
But let's not look at this neighborhood. Let's look at West Urbana and East Urbana. There, that's where the tension will be.
I should point out, if we're looking at West Urbana, that there are already 66 nonconforming, legally nonconforming duplexes in here. So a lot of these hatched ones might, you know, some of, some of those are going to have duplexes allowed currently.
Right. And so in R2, there would still be a conditional use permit that's required. In R3, this could happen regardless. Right now, we just have arbitrary lot size restrictions that are limiting it to some degree. But the east, the brown part of, I guess, east of Vine Street, that's R3? Is that the color coding? Okay.
Yeah.
Why we're kind of talking about that is, is something, I mean, is part of what I do. To me, I don't know how staff or the rest of the members feel. I'd be in favor of waiving all the minimum lot area requirements in a lot width, as long as you can meet all the other development requirements and leave this as a situation of where, where a duplex is allowed. With enough creativity and effort, you can put a duplex on any lot you want to.
Well, these changes aren't saying to waive lot and width requirements. They're saying that they should be the same as for a single-family home, that they should be treated the same.
Well, that's not quite correct, because they're saying that if your lot is old enough, you don't have to meet the requirements for a lot in these zones.
But that's for any use.
Right.
That's for any use that's allowed in those zones. So like Dustin was just saying, it would be the same requirements. If you have a lot pre-1950, this would say you could do a duplex there. Right now, you could only do a single-family home there, right? This would be allowing you to do a duplex there as well.
I understand that. But, so, come back to the question of rate of change. If I, I mean, I don't live in West Urbana. I live in an R3. But if I liked the balance of mix of residential uses in West Urbana as it is, then realizing how many additional lots would become available for duplex might be precisely what I don't want. In other words, it's pretty clear to me what the history of these exceptions and regulations is. And I think that ignoring that, we may want the change, but ignoring that without being clear about how we're dealing with that is, I think, worth thinking about.
Well, I would say if the history of, if the history includes an exclusionary intent to keep people out of neighborhoods based on family status or based on income levels, then that's something that we should try and remedy when we have the opportunity. So that's why I think that this is something that we should be considering.
So the distinction, I agree with you. I mean, you, I've, people have heard me refer to Wuna in less than pleasant tones. The distinction I'm making is that part of what makes Wuna an APA National Neighborhood winner is indeed the mix, that it does have family, that it does, in contrast to my neighborhood, I understand now, have a walkable elementary school, that it does have for a mix of people, maybe not the right mix, but a mix, walking to work and walking to downtown. So what I'm trying to think through, which is why I started with the north neighborhood, is if what we want is mixed neighborhoods, then we have to think about how we get a mix, not how we enable one set of things. Anyway.
So does that go back to the question of the comprehensive plan? And then I don't know how we, yeah, then I do wonder, does that go back to the comprehensive plan where we want neighborhoods to be diverse, have a mix, different types of housing opportunities, and that we could still prioritize the equity initiatives? Where, where, again, you said it's not a part of this conversation, but to have people reimagine what different ownership opportunities could look like that might be much more accessible, I know, not this conversation. But there's a way to broaden the way of thinking, because I know, right? In this world, younger adults are not looking, you know, there's a prioritization of not having sprawl and having more, but you could still want the benefits of ownership. So you could have a conversation that says, looking at the prioritization, if we don't want everything to be sort of open-market rental, you know, more college housing, we want to think about mixed-income housing. Articles come up about that. We want people to have multiple different opportunities. Does the comprehensive plan say enough about that? Then when decisions are made, we're kind of always referencing it. Is it aligned with the overall vision of where we're trying to go? Which doesn't say we don't do duplexes, but it just says, when conversations come, we're always going back to the comprehensive plan about how does it fit within the overall vision of what we say we want?
I really like the way you put it. I really like the way it was put. But then my question is that this, does this tax amendment fit into a scenario we want it to be?
So that was my crosswalk. I'm not sure. That's why I wanted to be sure that the change was sufficient and didn't get us into a place with unintended consequences. And I'm, I'm just not sure.
Well, if we prioritize these very important issues that have been brought up here, or if we let somebody else prioritize them, imagine Urbana under Big Move 1, to develop a plan to address Urbana's diverse housing needs. It, it does not address rental versus homeowner property. The one item it, it does include after much about study and creating partnerships is to promote tools to rehabilitate housing in priority neighborhoods. That is, if I take that as a guide, I can say, well, what is going to promote rehabilitation? The rehabilitation may be what the neighborhood wants or needs, or it may not. I don't know. But, but to implement rehabilitation of housing in priority neighborhoods strikes me as the comprehensive plan's distillation of these issues, done well or poorly.
So I, thanks for reading that out. And if in comprehensive plan or big move does not have enough language about promoting homeownership, maybe that's something we should add, should ask to be added.
So I think because I'm causing this in part, maybe I should suggest some ways out of it. At first, I'm not promoting homeownership. I'm promoting the notion that what we want is mixed neighborhoods. And mixed neighborhoods, in my view, if we're doing it through zoning, there are five attributes. There's the activity that occurs. There's the form that occurs. There's the interdependence among things. There's the ownership. And I missed one. I can't remember what I missed. Oh, and the key one is change. So we ought to be thinking about all five of those attributes when we think about a zoning category. And what I'd like to do is, as I suggested before, do a revision of 6.3 with enough stated intent about all of that to suggest how we want to enable neighborhoods to adapt to changing circumstances in a way that we have thought through. And I don't think we have to wait for the comprehensive plan to do that. That's not what I'm actually suggesting. But if the comprehensive plan helped to do that, that'd be fine, too. But that would be my suggestion, that we create a 7.3 that is not, as was also sort of mentioned, inherently about lot area and width, but is about adaptation of lot requirements related to changes in neighborhoods where rehabilitation renewal cannot happen for a set of rules that are in the way. And I think that would be a better way to do this than to make one change. I understand the political strategy. But anyway, that's what I would suggest.
I would second that. It feels, this is a big issue. By just crossing out two articles, it's not going to solve this issue. If we want to really reimagine our zoning code in, in this area, we should take it, the approach you recommended.
Oh, I can make a motion if you want to.
Sure, if you want to make, someone want to make a motion?
So I, I move that we send this proposal to staff. I was going to say back to staff, but I guess it's not actually from staff. To staff, to prepare a revision of Section 6.3 to address changes in area, lot width, common lot line, condo, duplex, adaptation in R2 and R3.
So we have a motion by Mr. Hopkins. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rose? Is that a second or, no? Well, we have a motion on the table, so let's deal with that first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Yu. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Rose?
I sense that that motion needs guidance from us to staff as to action.
My concern is that if, what I was hearing is there's concern about the balance between homeownership versus rental within certain neighborhoods. Why would the lot area and width section of the zoning ordinance be the place to deal with that in particular?
I think that seems to have become the focus. But what I'm trying to get at is all five attributes. So how are we dealing with the expectation of change? Should, for example, the conditional use be specified, which I think we can do with criteria for conditional use in a given district? Could be wrong, but I think we can. In order to make clear that we consider the conditional use as a strategy for dealing with the rate of change or the mix of form or use or whatever. And in the zoning ordinance, as Kevin has said, you're not directly addressing ownership. But the point is that indirectly, we affect it. And to not sort of acknowledge that, I think is, I think we should. So it's all of that. It's not just about ownership. That may be a minor thing, actually.
Right. My question was more, so we've directed staff to rewrite Section 6.3 lot area and width to address this, and that doesn't seem appropriate to me, because I think some of this would be addressed in, what is, section? What is the use section? Section 5?
5, yes.
Yeah, Section 5. And where would we, where would it be more appropriate to deal with? To spell out, you know, requirements for a conditional use permit or consideration criteria?
Yeah, there's a conditional use section of the zoning ordinance. I don't have it in front of me right now, but there is. And there are sections in there about specific conditional use. You can, you can, there are separate conditional use criteria you can use for, or you can spell out for, for different things.
Right. So that's why I'm just trying to clarify, that we're giving the clearest direction to staff.
Okay. And I agree. So let's imagine that the idea is the, the entry point to the question, because that's the entry point we've been given, is 6.3. And indeed, part of the question is, you know, what's the definition of a duplex? Well, it's got to be a single building. Can a single building be condoized? Yes, but it can't be subdivided, that the land underneath it cannot be subdivided. Can a zero-lot line house be, the land is actually subdivided as well as the property, so they can be separately owned. They're not condoized. And those, all those things, you know, may fade away and not be necessary to look at. But yes, you got to look at, you have to go and look at the definitions of R2 and R3, which require a 6,000-foot lot and a 60-foot. So you have to think, okay, anything that changes that isn't explicitly exempted in 6.3 has to meet those requirements. Maybe that's a problem. I don't know. But I think, I just think it's worth doing a little more complete task that makes it cleaner and more obvious where we're going.
Well, I would offer a suggestion, if I may.
Yes.
So, you know, imagine Urbana, we have Big Move number two is about rewriting the zoning ordinance to match the intent of, of our new plan. I think that's the, the appropriate time to be dealing with some of these larger issues would be once we adopt the plan and once we get into that process of probably rewriting the whole zoning ordinance. Because I envision that any changes we make right now might be gone in three or four years when we adopt a new zoning ordinance. Right now, to me, this seems like a very basic text amendment. We have two zoning or, or we have two zoning districts that say duplexes should be allowed here. One of them with a conditional use permit, so there's a little asterisk, one of them without. The maps in front of us are showing that there are tons of places within those districts that do not align with what our zoning ordinance is telling us clearly in words. So my suggestion is we pass this. So my suggestion is, we pass this, maybe we get rid of the common lot line stuff as well, right now, because that, you know, that's essentially the same, the same criteria or the same rules as for duplexes. And then we tackle these larger issues in the not-so-far future. That's my suggestion.
So.
Mr. Rose?
We have, the motion is to direct the staff to, to conduct rewrite.
Correct.
And the staff will, if this passes, the staff will get back to us with a rewrite. And I think we need to have criteria for acceptance or not of that, that would serve as direction to staff. And in my opinion, if the direction, if the direction is to now clean up language, to have staff do the work that the developer isn't paid to do, that is, to unify the section so that it, so that it works together, that has my strong support. I would hate to get, have the issue falter or staff not broadening the, that are on the table here.
So I would interpret a concise response being roughly what I heard Kevin just describe, that is coming back with an explanation that clarifies the wording, so we know what the outcome actually is and how A relates to these others, and deals with the common lot line in the same way. And by putting the two of them together, it actually addresses many of the things we've been talking about. And that's actually where we started. What has maybe led to the expectation of something massively more than that is that, yes, you have to make sure that it isn't contradicted somewhere else in the ordinance, and if you're gonna define the conditional use, to be clearer about that, because it's in here, but then, you know, that's part of it. I'm not suggesting that we're expecting a housing study, which we can talk about that later, too, to be done in order to figure this out. That's not, I don't think that's necessary.
Any more discussion on this? So if this were to be the direction, are, it seems like there's consensus or?
Just how simple would that, because it seems like, one, there's a recommendation to simplify a lot, so part of the work is just cleaning it up, making it simplifying, reducing any redundancy, so it actually feels like it shouldn't take long or be that complicated. But I guess I'm asking the question, is it a big deal to just simplify it?
I'm very good at simplifying things. I don't think it's a huge deal to simplify it. I could see you back in, what, two weeks with, you know, with something that simplifies things, that wraps in the common lot line stuff. So.
Removes anything that isn't needed?
Well, I think what Andrew is suggesting is we just get rid of minimum lot requirements citywide, and I would love to have that conversation sometime soon, but.
Yeah, my interpretation of Mr. Hopkins' motion wasn't that that was the direction, so.
Well, I think that's what it evolved to.
Well, in the long run, yes, but not for the immediate.
Yeah, I mean, I've been hearing the discussion, and I think the discussion now is distilled down to this simplifying it, dealing with the common lot stuff, along with the duplexes, making sure that it doesn't, you know, run afoul of other parts of the ordinance, which I haven't found any that it would yet, so.
Yeah, I think we should respond to the applicant, and for this particular issue, you know, the zoning reform in three years is another story, but I don't think that we're, that we should wait to resolve this or that.
Right, and if you've read your little moves, one of the little moves is, you don't have to wait, you can make little changes to the ordinance in the interim. So I consider this a little change to the, to the ordinance.
I have a question for staff. So this is a really unusual situation where a citizen brought this. This is great, but I would like to ask that, if it's not brought up by a citizen, would that be something our staff intended to do? Has that been a pain sore spot for our city in terms of development, for your knowledge?
I mean, for my knowledge, I'm not nearly as knowledgeable as, you know, an architect or a developer would be on this. I would count this one painful thing among many in the zoning ordinance, if that answers your question.
So you are aware, but it might not be your priority if you are going to spend your resource on fixing the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a running list, it's probably at least in the 70s or more of changes that would make our zoning ordinance better right now, so, and we just keep adding to it all the time. That's, that's one thing we do. So we'll be ready to come back with some changes in the interim after the plan gets But it's, a lot of it's addressing little, little issues.
Yeah, I'm asking that not because, like, this is a little issue, so it's not the most prioritized issue, so we shouldn't address, little moves, little issues should be addressed. I just wanted to get a perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to be clear, big move number seven, the first little move, identify and resolve barriers to incremental infill development. So to me, this seems like an obvious barrier to infill development, at least as it's been described by the applicant.
Right. Yeah, and, you know, when this application came in, I had, so I think I had an idea of sort of the scope of the issue of, you know, this substandard lots, like, I knew that it was limiting duplex development in certain areas of the city, but until I actually went in and did the GIS work on it, it wasn't so, you know, so plainly obvious, because, yeah, until you actually put it on the map and do the analysis, it's not smacking you right in the face, but I think this is pretty clear.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? All right, it seems like we're ready to vote. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allred?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen? Mr. Fell?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. McFarland? Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
All right, it's unanimous, that passes. Okay, so we'll hope to hear something more on that at our next regular meeting, which is in two weeks.
I believe so, yeah. Let's see, it'll be, yep, October 3rd.
Let me just be clear, the matter was put to us by the developer, is our response appropriate? It's neither reject, accept, or accept with modifications what was put in front of us.
I would direct that question to staff.
Yeah, that's, that's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to new business, any new business?
We have a study session somewhere in there, I don't have the agenda in front of me, though.
Oh, I have the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
Don't worry, we'll get to it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't drag Braden out for nothing.
Audience participation, Mr. Huber, do you wish to address the Plan Commission for five minutes about any topic of your choice?
I'm gonna keep this general about housing.
Got the timer? No, just kidding.
Okay, just random thoughts. So there's nothing that stops converting a single family to a rental, you have to remember.
In Urbana, you have to register a rental, I believe.
There is no prohibition on or rationing.
Understood.
So singling out a certain housing type as being a cause of investor ownership is, there's, there's no way to control that. Legally, there's no way to control that in our city. I could buy every house in West Urbana and turn it into a rental property legally. Second is for the audience. If this is so egregious, the audience watching, and I mean it truly, because when the issue of Wuna is raised, I think, why didn't they downzone their neighborhood? They had 50 years, take it from R2, take it from R3 to R1. If you didn't want duplexes ever, why can't they do that? Crystal Lake neighborhood, or, they can downzone it to R1. Kevin doesn't want, a bunch of cases, but everyone, if you don't want duplexes, I recommend you start lining up and downzoning your proper, your neighborhood from R2 or R3 to R1. The R3 allows duplexes. And I guess, why does R3 exist? Why don't we, as a city, take, downzone all of the R3 and all of the R2 to R1? If the stakes are that grave, that duplexes are that bad, that we have other mechanisms, is my understanding, to eliminate duplexes. It's just unusual to live and own property in an R3 neighborhood that says we can have And we're told that you won't, you won't like, you won't like those duplexes. So I just hope we can align the zoning districts with the other mechanisms of the zoning ordinance. And if we have a problem with duplexes, that we address that through the zoning map and the zoning districts, and start making it much more clear what we, as a city, want, instead of saying, we want single and two families, but not. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, staff report.
I feel like I need to say something. I think what I've been saying has been misconstrued. I've lived in R3, across from a duplex. And part of the reason that the south part of the State Street, I think, starting from Michigan Avenue, is zoned R1, is because Wuna folks have been battling this for 50 years. And one of the reasons the rest of it isn't, is because part of the historical claim of that neighborhood, which is, I agree, problematic in various ways, is that it has not been single-family only.
All right, staff report, do we have anything to report out?
So we, let's see, we wrapped up our Imagine Urbana neighborhood meetings today, the last one was at St. Matthew Church. The attendance has, has been really good, there was just, there was only one out of the six that was very lightly attended, but the rest of them, we had, you know, double-digit numbers, low double-digit numbers, but, but still. So folks have been coming out, they've been giving us good comments, good feedback, so those have been going well. I think I might, since we've been having our night market, I might actually just grab all of this stuff and go over to the night market next week, just for fun, and see if I can get some more folks to, to give some feedback. But, yeah, those have been going well. Again, just thanks to Dustin, your students, for, for helping us put those boards and maps together, because those have been really effective.
You guys still have that corn outfit? Maybe if you put that on and take the?
So, it's funny that you ask about this, because we just got some emails recently, somebody was looking for the corn outfit. It's called Corny, but, yeah, we do not know where Corny is. We're, we're looking for Corny, we hope to find him soon.
That's too bad, I think that would draw a crowd, Kevin. All right, that brings us to our study session.
All right.
Do we have something from staff that's structuring this, or?
I believe so.
Okay.
So my name is Braden Belcher, and I'm the Grants Division Manager for the City of Urbana. So tonight, I'm gonna be sharing a little bit about what the Grants Division does in terms of housing, and also how the comprehensive plan will be used as an important tool for both short and long-term goals and objectives of our, our division, and also the Community Development Department as well. So I'll talk a little bit about, you know, the things we do know about housing in our community, and also touch on some of the areas where we need additional research and additional analysis as well, in order to address the issues that residents have made, made us aware of. So again, just a little bit about the Grants Division. So we manage over $10 million annually in federal and state grant funds. The main source of funding that we manage comes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the purpose of those grants are to support the development and preservation of affordable housing for low-income individuals and families. So in Urbana, these grant funds support various programs, including rental assistance, housing rehabilitation, and also new housing construction. So I think Kevin and Andrea have done a really good job talking about all of the ways that public input has really been the backbone of this comprehensive planning process. They've done a really good job getting out into the community and listening to the folks in our town and what they have to say about, about the needs in the community. The Grants Division also conducts regular community outreach to learn about the various needs that our residents are experiencing, and like Kevin and Andrea, we also hear often about the need for housing, and to address various housing issues. I just took four comments that we received back in, in March, when we were, when the Grants Division was doing some community outreach regarding housing. As you'll see from these comments, people have a variety of concerns, right? It's not just about affordability, but also availability of housing and the condition of housing as well. So we hear this a lot, and again, just to reiterate, this is a really fundamental part of the comprehensive plan, and has gone into the little moves that we developed in order to address some of and has gone into the little moves that we developed in order to address some of these needs. So again, what we know, we do know a lot about the situation in Urbana and the different housing needs that exist. So for example, housing age and condition, that's something that we do have a pretty good handle on. Population characteristics, obviously, the census and the American Community Survey are vital tools that our staff use regularly in order to design programs and also allocate resources effectively. And we also know that the cost of housing is rising. If you have turned on a TV, in the past couple of months, you've seen that. That is a concern that we see in Urbana. So all of these things are, again, we do have data, and then also there's the anecdotal evidence that we have from the input that we receive from our community members. So now I'll move on to some of the things that we need to kind of do a deeper dive in. And again, the little moves identified in the Comprehensive Plan are really speaking to these areas in order for us to develop effective strategies for the next 10, 20 years in terms of thinking about housing and addressing the needs that we have in our community. So the first is housing and workforce trends. It's going to be very important for us to study the trends over the last decade, to get localized data on, again, workforce, wages, and how that relates to housing, and the stock that's available and the stock that's being built. Another important thing that needs to be examined, and that is identified in the little moves, are the housing gaps, right? So what housing products are missing from the market right now, and what tools or what strategies will most effectively address these gaps. We also need to continue to work on affordable and workforce housing needs as well. So this is kind of specific to what I do here at the city, again, with the resources that we receive from the federal government. So here, I'm referring specifically to subsidized affordable housing. How can the city best utilize the limited federal resources we receive for the greatest impact in our community? Just, you know, one question I get often is, well, we know affordable housing is an issue. How many units per year need to be built, for example? That's a very kind of basic question that needs some more analysis. And again, those trends in the market and just statewide, but also locally, are very important to consider. I also want to call out fair housing as well. This is an area that we highlight in our little moves. It's very important for us to examine the racially concentrated areas of poverty that exist and to better understand what meaningful actions can be taken to overcome these patterns and to foster an inclusive community free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity. Again, anecdotally, we know a lot of that already, but it's a subject that has to be, I think, analyzed further so that we can implement specific strategies, and then tie those strategies to actual resources that can address some of those issues. So again, I think we have a strong foundation. The purpose of the Comprehensive Plan and the little moves identified in the big move Area 1 are really meant to build on that for the future. So the Comprehensive Plan, again, it lays out the steps that city staff will take to research, develop, and implement strategies to address Urbana's varied housing needs. Again, this process requires localized data and also requires planning. For grant staff, this process will also ensure that our resources are used responsibly and effectively and in a way that responds to local needs. This process will also help align zoning and land use with housing goals and objectives. We all know that zoning and land use policies impact many aspects of housing development, including affordability and equity. And this, again, is relevant to the work that we do in the Grants Division. For me and my staff, we have to work with a lot of HUD reports and a lot of HUD requirements. And HUD requires and expects municipalities to consider how their zoning and land use impacts housing, specifically affordable housing, as well as equity, and the potential barriers that these local policies create to this housing. HUD strongly encourages and incentivizes municipalities to align zoning and land use with affordable housing and fair housing goals. So again, these little moves outlined in the plan are directly relating to the work that our staff are already doing. So again, just to summarize what I've been talking about here, the little moves that we have identified in the Comprehensive Plan will help foster housing diversity, availability, and affordability. When taken together, these actions will align goals with existing and potential funding streams through the creation of a housing implementation strategy, ensure equity in housing by addressing fair housing concerns and investing in public services, improving housing conditions by promoting tools to rehabilitate properties in low-income neighborhoods, strengthen partnerships with our local housing providers, such as the Housing Authority of Champaign County, and, very importantly, help attract housing developers. Not just affordable housing developers, but also developers of market-rate housing, which is a need in the community as well. So that's the end of my presentation. We can take any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mr. Belcher. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Belcher? Okay, I'll get us started then. So thanks for the presentation. You know, it was great, I would ask you to put the slide again, but it was mostly you talking about the connection between housing and land use and zoning and spatial planning. So not just that we need housing at different price points, at different affordability, but thinking about where that housing goes. What sort of capacity do we have currently to absorb that housing? Where, you know, do we need to think about building infrastructure to support that housing if needed? Which, to me, is not really in the current list of little moves under the housing section. And I think this is something that we've talked about before, that some of these big moves are a little bit siloed. So it would be great to see, you know, exactly what you said there, show up in not just the kind of to-do list items here, but also in kind of like the principles or the criteria that would be used to guide decisions that would support those kinds of investments, right, to allow that housing to happen.
Thank you. That's important feedback.
Ms. Sims.
And I have a sort of nerd, I love that comment, but a nerd question, because some of the question, right, and I know it's to be determined, but some of the questions like, "We haven't done a study around looking at what are the needs of available or affordable housing." However, I know that there are entities in town who do variations of it, so I guess I'm wondering about like the process, how collaborative the work is, because there are people who are doing, I just met with Cunningham Township. I was just at a meeting with, at Land of Lincoln, right? Like, multiple different places are looking at this question. So I just wonder what our process is for taking available data and maybe leveraging that data in our execution, so we're not making, spending so much time making it our own that we're not building upon what we could find out pretty quick, quicker or more efficiently? Or, because sometimes it's just disaggregating data and looking at your dataset, not having to do another study.
Yeah, that's really great feedback and a very excellent point. Thankfully, we do have a very collaborative community in that regard. And as you point out, there are a lot of agencies that are doing this work, you know? And that's going to be very critical to the success. And again, I think that's why it's important that the little moves call out continuing to build and invest in those relationships. I guess what I would say from my perspective at the city is, you know, we're not necessarily a service provider. We're a funder of these projects. And so for me, one of the first things in thinking about, okay, a funding strategy, is really thinking through, okay, those relationships are important to have in place, but what's that broader plan that's built on specific interventions that we need to make? And again, that information, a part of the study and the analysis is bringing in all these different, you know, components of data. You know, Cunningham Township might have certain data on homelessness, whereas the Housing Authority might have information on, you know, vouchers or homeownership rates. So bringing all those stakeholders to the table, that's absolutely a critical part of the research that needs to go into kind of developing that strategy, because any sort of solution will require collaboration. And I think that planning process really helps that. So everyone kind of knows, okay, we have this shared vision, and we all are kind of going in the same direction together.
Can I just add to that response? And feel free to just either correct me or elaborate. But one of the things that we found is, and that we're very interested in, is having a sort of a comprehensive sense of housing needs, because we have a lot of participants in the space of providing affordable housing at various levels. And we know we need, anecdotally, we know we need more. We just know we need more. And we also need more opportunities for market-rate housing of various types. But what we don't know is what do we have on the ground, where is it located? And as Braden was saying, what are the gaps in these different levels? And that's why, and to my knowledge, no one even in their, even in whatever tier they are examining, has done a comprehensive housing study, even in their tier. And I mean, we have a study from, I want to say 10 years ago, 15 years ago. I don't know that anybody has replicated that. But it's very important, as we think about the city overall, and we absolutely want to work against concentrations of poverty, and we want to work towards greater diversity of housing types that can lead to affordability, and we want to make sure that the tools that we create, if we intend for them to be used to support affordable housing, that they don't get misdirected because we didn't control them and become market-rate housing, and then we lost the opportunity with that tool. So one of the things that's in the Imagine Urbana is this comprehensive housing study, because to our knowledge, no one has done one across the full spectrum of affordability, including market rate. And it hasn't been done, sort of anchored in the geography that will inform and be this intersection, which I think this particular text amendment that you had tonight is actually a great example of not only thinking about density and housing types, but what is the economy informing about that, right? So you learn from somebody who has a lot of experience that here's how this happens in real life. It has to be a piece of, it has to be a piece of property that's heavily deteriorated. It's not going to be, you don't look at the map that Kevin showed you and say, "That's all going to convert to duplex." It's going to be very, very incremental and limited. And it's going to be those properties that we want to change, right? Because right now, they are derelict houses or significantly under-invested. So anyway, that, I mean, I think you start to get a sense of the totality of what we're trying to capture, because it will inform what we do going forward.
I'm going to be a stickler, so I'm just going to say that, I'm going to say this explicitly because it's my frustration, because we live in a university town. I would anticipate that there's more available data that just needs to be aggregated than not. And because I know every semester, we send tons of stu... I just know so many people who are doing research projects around this question, just because of where I'm located and situated. And I just would love it, as a person who's in the community, who frequently intersects with all of the various people asking the "tell me about" question, there's just so much redundancy in our evaluation processes. So I don't know how we find out where all the people are doing it, and again, pull the data together, rather than, I feel my frustration with being here often is that people act like they have to go back to square one, and there is frequently just the need for comprehensive planning. And it does not have to be, if you don't initiate the project, it doesn't mean the data isn't good. There, yeah, so I'm sorry. It's just, as someone who's in the community, who gets asked to find people and invite people to things, there's just so much redundancy. And again, I'm in, in a week, I'm in so many places where people are asking these same questions. I just don't think that, I think that there's a separation from the community side to here, to the city side. And even when we sit at a meeting that's supposed to be collaborative, because we're not asking the right questions, you're not drilling down enough to find out what people have, right? So you're not even asking the question like, "What's the research project your students are working on?" Because all of us are asking variations of these proj... I'm sorry. You just would not believe how many times I see some not... You would not believe how many times we've got people doing projects to give you some of what you need.
Thank you for saying that. I will say that I certainly share that frustration as well. That's definitely a barrier to moving forward on things. And also, if you know of people or know of projects, please pass out my contact information, and they can get in touch with me.
In the comments, Ms. Hopkins?
So, sort of following up on these two. I think that the connection to the spatial pattern, the things that Dustin was saying, and the data to do it, as Ms. Sims was saying, we should be able to use that in the next couple of months to make more actively in the plan the implications of some of this. So that we're not starting out, that the first move is to do a plan. The first move in a plan being to be, to do a plan is not a good move. We ought to be putting to work what we already know. And clearly, we have a housing consolidated study. We're doing one right now. Some of the data that we need about, we're doing a development opportunity map right now. We ought to be able to say a lot more in the plan, as well as keep working, obviously, but...
And my last comment around this part, and hopefully, you know, we'll look at it again, is I saw that we prioritize developers, and I know it'll broaden and deepen for little moves, but there are just a lot more people who should be included in that prioritization, right? If we're thinking about housing development, so there, yeah, so there's a banking, like, you know. So, and I know it's implied and inferred in their subtext, but just to be thinking much more collaboratively, I think sometimes we get, again, siloed in our thinking. And I would just want us to, I think sometimes we don't get to the objectives that we need to because we're missing important pieces, and then we bring them to the table too late. So if I'm thinking about mixed-income housing or comprehensive housing development, I also want to talk to landlords. And I also want to, I mean, like, there are just so many other questions and other variables that I just don't want us to miss the mark. I really want us to think well about who's at the table, how do we get there? How do we make sure that we're asking the right questions? And I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, so this is just important.
I'm glad you brought up developers. I mean, we've got one here in the room with us, but one of the things from an economic development perspective that we are lacking is that information on what our community really needs in the forms of attracting developers here. For instance, the RFP that... For instance, the RFP that we talked about, we got no responses to that. And had we had a study, if we want housing there, if we had a study that really showed this is what the need is in this community, then developers know that it's a safer bet to come and talk with us about it.
And that could also be a conversation with banking, right? Like, there's so many different, that's why I was like, it's not a silo conversation. It's a multi-level conversation with the interest rate. I'm sorry, I'm going to stop talking, but you know.
And I appreciate the, we are in this information-rich community, where there's a lot of data out there, but there has not been this consolidated effort to bring that together into a useful tool for our community. And that's what we're, that's what we're getting at, is trying to develop a scope. We've seen other communities do this, and they have used it as an economic development tool as well, as well as another tool. But it's just something that we think is lacking as far as bringing a consolidated, comprehensive study together that gives us that information, where we've talked with developers, we've talked with the community, we've talked with all these partners, and somebody needs to take the lead on that.
I think what I'm, what we're hearing, what I'm hearing, is that it would be great to know a little more than what seems to be expressed in the plan about what the housing situation is, because it's a missed opportunity not to include what we know to shape, you know, the goals and the objectives that then allow us to use the comprehensive plan to make decisions that come to us, like we were debating and discussing tonight. And if all we're doing, not all we're doing, but, you know, a big chunk of this big move is to do a study, then we're missing the opportunity to incorporate, you know, important information, even if it's not perfect information, in the current plan, right? That's going to, I mean, I know that we say we're going to update it again in five years, or whatever, but it would be great to have a little more to go off of. I mean, the only, when I look through the list here, the only thing of use, you know, it's a plan commission, is allow a variety of housing types in every neighborhood at scales appropriate to each neighborhood. You know, those are the kinds of things that we need to have in the plan so that we can respond to proposals, either from people requesting zoning changes, to do, you know, interesting, you know, housing projects that add, you know, diversity and affordability in different locations, or something like that. Or, you know, proposals from staff to reform zoning that are expected to come in two, three years, we're told, you know? How are we going to evaluate those if the information isn't in the comprehensive plan, right? So I get that you want to have better information to have a better picture, but yeah, I got to think there's a way to get some sense of this, you know, in a quicker way to include some of it. So we know a little bit more than at least we do currently, something like that. Any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, I just, like what Dustin just said, we're sitting here anticipating what our community needs, we're guessing, we're using our knowledge based on our neighborhoods, our observed knowledge. It just feels like we don't have enough information to help us to understand what's going on in our community. Where is the painful spot? All of those information come to us in a way from our personal experience, and that can be, that might not be the right way to get this type of information for us to deliberate on important cases. So would really appreciate if we can get those informations soon. That would be very helpful for us to understand our community, and help to facilitate and make better decisions.
Mr. Rose? All right. Anyone else? Last chances? All right, was there anything else for the study session? Was there any, so we have a schedule of study sessions, which is, kind of, I feel like we had a longer list that we talked about, but is, is there any, has everyone had a chance to look at this? And is there anything missing? Suppose we don't need to decide tonight, but...
No, that was just sort of us sharing with you what our, what our plans are for coming study sessions. So feel free to send me comments.
Okay, sounds good. With that, we are adjourned.